Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Tewksbury zoning board of appeals. Today is February 23rd, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First on our list is the approval of our meeting minutes for November 17th, 2022, December 29th, 2022, and January 26th, 2023.
No, we can make a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the minutes from November 17th, 2022, December 29th, 2022, and January 26th, 2023.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Right into our hearings. First up is Erin Kelly for a variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for front yard setbacks and special permit under section 8.1.1(c) to alter a previously existing non-conforming structure in order to construct a second floor addition, a three-foot-six-by-four side deck and a five-by-seven-eighths front deck with a hip roof, as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 45 Highland Ave., assessors map 3 lot, zoned 43, zoned residential. Yes, please.
And who are the voting members on it?
The voting members are myself, Mike, and Rob.
Hi.
Hi. Name an address for the board, please.
My name is Erin Kelly, and I'm a resident and the homeowner of 45 Highland Avenue.
Won't you tell us what you're trying to do?
Yeah, absolutely. So our house is a small, kind of raised ranch expanded cape. It's our expanded ranch, small cape. We have a family of four now, two growing kids, so we want to just make some more room. So we're looking to add, like, a bigger family room and a master suite to a full second floor. We're also looking to replace the current, like, really poor set of side stairs with a new set of side stairs and add, actually, it says a front deck, but we're looking to add a deck in the back. So it won't go towards the front anymore. The five-by-seven or five-by-seven-and-eight-inch deck would be in the backyard. We are looking to add a small hip roof over our existing front stairs. So we knew that our house is older and so that it might be not in compliance with the front setback rules, so that's why we are proposing to go up and not out.
Okay.
Did you put this packet together?
I did.
Yeah.
One of the nicest woodroofs here in the world.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem. So, yeah, you can see in the design that the current second floor, it's just one small, tiny room that's up there, and so we'll add quite a bit more square footage without moving closer to the street on either side.
Do you have, if you don't mind?
No.
That's what you have now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a print, an overlay of what it'll be when you're done?
No, it's, no. It wouldn't change except for, like I said, a deck on the back.
So you're not going any closer to the front?
No.
She said she's leaving that as is and just putting the little roof on top.
It's just a little roof on the existing stairs.
That's all she's putting there, under that. It's already there.
So you're keeping the same footprint?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Actually, even the back deck won't extend beyond our existing garage.
Okay.
Which I know that doesn't impact anyone besides us anyways, but, yeah, it's not changing the home's footprint in any way.
Will the, um, will the hip roof, hip roof be any closer than the stairs?
No. It'll just cover the landing.
Now, I see. You're on a corner.
Yeah, it's a corner lot.
That's why you need the, so you have two fronts. There you go. So on your side deck?
It'll just be stairs in it. Well, actually, because the stairs will turn to the side, it will be less of a setback than the existing stairs.
Right, but your setback's not on your stairs, it's on your house.
Right, so it's not a deck that's being added, it's just stairs for the egress. We're just replacing an existing stairwell.
Okay, no deck?
No deck.
Okay. It confused me because it said side deck.
On the, like, denial letter?
On the application.
Well, that, yeah, because that's what they wrote on the denial letter, but that's not what's there, what we're doing.
And your front deck?
There's no front deck.
Is actually a back deck.
Yep.
And the hip roof is in the front.
Exactly.
So you've got three different things going on here. You're building a hip roof. You're building a deck off the back, and you're replacing a set of stairs. Right?
Is there anything else you want to add?
No, I mean, like I said, we're not trying to impact the neighborhood in any way, except hopefully by increasing the value of our home, increasing the neighborhood, improving the neighborhood.
Being a public hearing, is there anything anybody wants to add? Nope. Board, anything you want to add, say?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Rob?
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. So we're putting a second floor on, adding a set of stairs, adding a deck in the back, and adding a hip roof in the front.
Technically replacing a set of stairs.
Replacing a set of stairs. Well, they're going to go up to the second floor now, right?
No.
Still on the first one?
Yep.
I just have one quick one. So I have three-by-six-by-four is not a side deck, it's a side stair.
It's side stairs.
So I should say stairs, right?
Yeah, the, yeah.
And I did, you did say that before.
No, no, no. I was told that my application had to match the denial letter, even though I didn't think the denial letter was accurately the designs submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you all, I appreciate your time.
See, the only thing I'm concerned about here is if you look at the denial letter, right?
Yep.
They reference Highland Ave., so they reference the front of the house. And he's saying it's going to be approximately 14 feet from Highland Ave. But we're not building a front deck.
Exactly. That's why he denied it. I know, and I was told that I had to come here.
Well, you do need it.
Yeah.
I just, I don't like the way it's worded because you're adding a hip roof, right?
Yes, to an existing, yeah.
Five feet coming off the house, seven foot eight wide? Or the other way around?
The back deck will be five feet, seven-eighths inches. I think they, I don't understand why they wrote the letter this way, and I did question it.
How big is the hip roof?
The hip roof, I'm not exactly sure, but it's the, it's just going to cover the top landing of the existing stairwell. Or stairwell is not the right word, but the existing front stairs.
Four feet, maybe?
Not even, yeah.
I understand what you're saying, I just...
Is it in the design?
He's got it, he's got it listed at three feet. Right? We always say what plans filed with this board. If the thing's four feet, now you're in a jam. Right, because it is, that roof is part of the house.
Right.
So you have to, you have to use it as you like.
Right. Can't believe this, but I don't think I have a copy of the designs with me.
There's no, it doesn't say how much.
I think maybe on the side design, on the side profile of the house, it shows that the design stopped at the...
Wait, there's more.
The proof of system, yeah. I mean, here it shows right here. It gives dimensions to everything like that. Everywhere else it states up what the sizes are, everything except for the hip roof.
It does list the exterior doors 32 inches wide.
But not that hip.
No.
Everything else is listed but that.
With the landing?
Yeah, that piece. Everything else has the size, but not that. But it's not showing that it's even going over the front step.
As we were just saying about the deck, that's not going to extend any further than your house.
Yeah, and it's in the back, yeah.
I'm okay with it, I just, I want to get it right.
I understand.
This letter's been bothering me for a long time. Rob, do you see page number two? It kind of shows the side elevation.
Yes, but there's no...
No, no dimensions, but...
No dimensions at all.
Maybe if we make the motion...
You're going to make that motion?
We call out that the hip roof is above... Above the front landing. Because it is shown, but it's not...
No, it is.
It's shown, so...
No, no, understood.
The three-foot-six-by-four foot is a staircase, right? It's like side stairs.
Right. Five-by-seven-eighths back deck.
It was a back deck.
With a front hip roof.
No, I take that right out, not even with, because it's not with it.
You're right, it's not. Should we say "and"?
Yep.
And the front hip roof?
I put front hip roof. Front hip roof. Above front landing.
Yep.
That's what I want.
You make the motion, close both parts?
I'm moving close both parts.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, Rob, could you make the motion?
I'd love to make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve Erin Kelly for a special permit under section 8.1.1 to alter a previously existing non-conforming structure in order to construct a second floor addition. Now, let's go with the whole thing. Construct a second floor addition with a three-foot-by-six-foot, three-foot-by-six... I'm going to try again. Three-foot-six-by-four-foot side stairs, a five-foot-by-seven-foot-eight-inch back deck, also a hip roof above the front landing. Said property is located at 45 Highland Ave., assessors map 3, lot 43, zoned residential.
Second? Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a second motion for Erin Kelly for a variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for front yard setbacks to construct a second floor addition, a three-foot-six-inch-by-four-foot side set of stairs, a five-foot-by-seven-foot-eight-inch back deck, and also a hip roof above the front landing. As shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at 45 Highland Ave., assessors map 3, lot 43, zoned residential.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you're per...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You too. Thank you. Thank you for the packet again. Okay, next up, we have Mark and Lisa Paradise for a variance under section 5.3.1E3 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws for an accessory structure within front setbacks for an 18-inch round above-ground pool, as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 1456 Whipple Road, assessors map 56, lot 28, zoned residential.
And who are the voting members on this one?
The voting members are you three gentlemen. Name an address for the board, please.
Lisa Paradise, 1456 Whipple Road.
Mark Paradise, 1456 Whipple Road.
Tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do here, please.
So we want to install an 18-foot round swimming pool. If you look at our plot plan, you can see that our house sits at an angle on the lot, and there's no other place to put it other than it oversticking the front of the structure. We've tried to move, we worked with the, um, the guy that did the plot plan. If we move it any further back, it won't be 15 feet off of...
The property.
The property line. And if we moved it off the neighbor's 15 feet, then it sits on our back stairs. We have, we do have the front around that fenced in. If you'd like to see, I have a few pictures on my phone. So you wouldn't even see the pool from the street, and we have a very large front yard. As you can see, there's no other place to put a pool.
You're all front-heavy, not back-heavy.
Yeah, and there's woods behind us, right.
But we do have a fence then. It fences in, it goes around.
It would be around where the pool is. It's already completely fenced in, if you'd like to see a picture.
Thank you. I'll probably be in a minute.
And we only have one, actually, one neighbor it would affect because nobody is behind us. And the neighbor to the left of us, he, he doesn't have an issue. He has a pool as well in his yard, but there's just no other place that we could locate a swimming pool. And I have health issues that I need to use a non-weight bearing for physical therapy.
Is that nothing at all behind you, just woods?
It's woods and it's a pond.
It's, it's actually, it's not a pond, but...
It's a man-made pond.
It's a man-made. What they did was they ran water down from Robert Circle and all that down into their, so it fills up.
Us and the neighbor used to be one big lot, and we've owned the house almost 10 years, and at some point, they split the lot. So their lot's huge next door, and they built the house that we're in, which was the original house.
Just a quick question on the lot behind you that, it's a wetland.
It's not wetland.
It's not wetlands, it's just all woods that is owned by...
It's owned by the Lamoans.
Oh, and I see two structures on there, is that...
Nothing.
Nothing, no.
I guess there's a people road.
There's a barn back there.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's old, yeah.
I was just going to say that there's an indicator on there.
There is an indicator that there's a barn back there, an old barn.
I guess it used to be an old horse farm and the original barn. That's on, that's not our structure. That's the neighbor's structure. We have a shed.
That's not on you.
It might be on you.
It's two.
This is on this one?
Yes. Oh, so one is the house. The big one, the perfectly square one is their house next door. And then the small one behind it is a barn. That's just an old, rent-shackled...
It's ready to fall down.
I'm surprised all these storms it hasn't yet. Yeah, why our house was built at an angle, I don't know why.
Turn the clocks.
It's probably built at an angle so you could get your, um, your, your side setbacks.
Side what?
Backs.
Side setbacks. Nah, you could have moved that. They could have squared that one.
Yeah, but it smells bad.
Some guy with a mechanical pencil, getting creative. We'll build it like this.
Well, actually, this was the original house, and they built the house next door and they split the lot. This house, I guess, was built in four sections. And if you want, I could show you the...
Yes, I'd like to see the part, please.
So this is the front of the house. And we have it fenced in already. The pool wouldn't come out of the fence.
You were noting on this?
So it's already fenced in, and this is, I know it shows a picture of, this is a telephone. I have a telephone radio back to, I don't know, the Horizon pole, I guess.
Utility box? No, it's just a Verizon pole.
Which we had fenced in around, so it's nice.
It's just for the high wire, it's for the cable, for the cable wire.
So the pole's behind the fence?
Yeah.
And the pool will be behind the fence as well?
Yes.
Yeah, the pool will be behind the fence. There's nothing on that side, it's completely fenced in all the way around.
So you took the picture from behind you, huh?
No, this is actually in my front yard.
That's from my front yard, looking into my backyard, from my driveway.
You don't see anything past that, on their yard, behind the fence.
Yeah, so you wouldn't see anything from the road.
I'm just thinking of the pole.
Yeah, that's actually standing in my driveway, looking this way. But this is the driveway. So this is my driveway right here. So I'm looking, neighbor's house.
Oh, you're looking at your neighbors, okay.
So the pool would be behind this, and Whipple Road is still way down here.
This is your house here?
Yes.
And then...
And this is my driveway.
And this is the fence, and the fence, the pool would be there outside of the fence.
Yes. So this is where I'm standing, right here. So I'm standing here, the fence actually comes down here. This is fenced in, and it goes like this. So the pool would be behind the fence because the fence is around this, the fence goes way down here.
I understand exactly how you can do this.
Thank you. Still no questions, Rob?
No, I'm good.
If, being an open hearing, anybody have anything they want to add? Okay. Somebody make the motion, please? Somebody want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion for a variance under section 5.3.1E3 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for an accessory structure within front setbacks for an 18-foot round above-ground pool, shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 1456 Whipple Road, assessors map 56, lot 28, zoned residential.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. You as well.
Enjoy.
Right, careful. Next, we have Weston and Sampson on behalf of the Town of Tewksbury GPW for a variance under sections 5.3.1E1 and 5.3.1E3 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for accessory structure within front setbacks and accessory structure exceeding 1.5 stories or 20 feet in height related to the constructions of the new 43,700-foot building as shown on the plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 999 Whipple Road, assessors map 30, lot 26, zoned residential. Good evening, gentlemen. Name and address for the board, please. Name and address for the board, please.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Kevin Hargman, I'm the Public Works Director for the Town of Tuxbury. Uh, here with Tyler Cofalice from Weston and Sampson and Tony Westpizer from Weston and Sampson on behalf of the, uh, the Public Works and the project at hand. Uh, Tony has a, a short presentation to provide some additional information to the board. Is that okay?
Sure. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. As Kevin said, my name is Tony Westpizer. I'm with Weston and Sampson. And I'm here tonight to present the new DPW and school maintenance facility to the zoning board of appeals and discuss the variance that we're looking for. The project, the property is located at 999 Whipple Road in Tuxbury. For anybody who's not familiar with that location in town, it's on the southern portion of town indicated by the red star on this slide. This is an aerial photograph of the site. It comes across as a little faint on this, but I think we'll be able to get the message across with this slide as it is. Whipple Road is on the east side of the site. Pine Street on the south side. And then the wing-shaped building in the middle is the existing DPW facility. This is another aerial photograph, a site-on view this time, but that same wing-shaped existing DPW facility highlighted in yellow. This is a snip from the town's tax maps. The lot is 30-26. It's a little more than 21 acres. And we do want to point out that the property runs from Whipple Road on the east side to Pond Street on the west side. Under the new zoning bylaws, the property is zoned as Residence 40. However, when the project started, it was zoned as municipal. Because of this recent change in the bylaws, we'll need to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals for two of the existing buildings, which become accessory structures in the redevelopment. And I'll discuss that a little bit more in a few minutes. As far as allowable uses, the DPW and school maintenance operations are municipal uses, which are allowed in the Residence 40 district. And with respect to dimensional requirements, the project is compliant with the frontage and setback, as well as dimensional requirements. Just talk a little bit about what is proposed. We have a new building and associated site development with limited renovation of the existing building. This is a, uh, site plan for the overall developed site. The highlighted yellow is the redevelopment area. Then the new building is in the light tan color there. And I do want to point out at this point that to the back of the new building is a small pocket of unsuitable soil. Um, the unsuitable, the nature of that unsuitable soil is a stump landfill, which I'd also like to note is just, just buried stumps, very common at DPW facilities throughout New England. Uh, however, DEP does regulate them, so, um, and we're working with DEP on, on that aspect of it. But, um, where it is unsuitable material, it, it is costly to build over them. And that will become a factor on a slide that I'll point out a little bit later in the presentation. We did provide a, uh, or prepare a perspective, a 3D perspective from Pond, um, I'm sorry, from Pine Street. Um, the red arrow indicates the viewpoint. Again, the red arrow and the viewpoint. And this is a 3D rendering or perspective of the building from Pine Street. So, the reason why we're here tonight is that, um, under, well, I'm sorry. Let me just get my bearings here. Um, oh, as shown on the previous slides, the new operations building will be the principal building on the site. And the existing buildings will become accessory structures. So as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we're seeking a variance for two of these structures, one for height and one for location relative to the front building line. So that's the new building as the principal structure and the two accessory structures. This is a snip from paragraph 5.3.1. With regard to the height requirement, the existing building, um, has a height of 20 feet 8 inches compared to a, a limit of 20 feet, so a little bit higher than the limit. I do have a slide that shows the part of the building that does exceed that limit, the actual height of 20, um, feet 8 inches versus the limit by the bylaw. So we did look at options for addressing that height restriction. One option might be to demolish the existing DPW facility. However, we found that to be infeasible or not feasible, because it would eliminate 20,000 square feet of much-needed vehicle storage space, indoor vehicle storage space. So a large portion of the fleet would end up being stored outdoors. That results in a significant financial burden to the town associated with accelerated deterioration, as well as replacement of the town's multimillion-dollar fleet. There would be potential impacts to public safety associated with the delayed DPW response time due to that exterior storage. That has to do with cold weather starting, vehicle prep time, and so forth. As well as a potential impact to employee safety associated with exterior storage. That has to do with cleaning off large equipment of snow and ice climbing on it when it's slippery, um, and presents some safety issues, as well as safety issues with connecting equipment outdoors, plows with hydraulic lines and so forth, in rainy, snowy conditions. Another option we looked at and considered not feasible was replacing the existing DPW facility with the second new structure, eight inches lower. Found that to be cost prohibitive and a significant burden, um, financially to the town's taxpayers. With regard to the front building line, the existing food pantry, which has always been there, uh, and this is relative to paragraph three of this section, um, and the front building line. I, I have a slide that illustrates this. We're going to zoom in on this portion of the site. That's the new building. And the front building, oh, I'm sorry, food pantry first. I switched this up late this afternoon. Front building line. And if we extend that front building line across, we pick up the, um, food pantry and find that the, a portion of the food pantry is not behind the front building line. One thing I do want to point out is that this portion of the building is the administrative offices and is a bid alternate. And in the event the town does not pick up that bid alternate and proceed with it, then the front building line ends up actually be coming back here as the, um, and you can see on the right-hand side, we, um, clip a, just a small corner of the existing building. We looked at options and found them not feasible for the front building line. One option would be to relocate the food pantry to be behind that front building line. This would result in intermixing of food pantry traffic with DPW traffic at the back of the site and the DPW's large and heavy-duty vehicles. That would create public safety issues. It would be detrimental to the DPW operations as far as interference with those operations potentially, and also represents a financial hardship to address the unsuitable soil conditions behind the principal structure that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. The, that is the, um, stump landfill. Another option might be to shift the location of the principal building closer to Pine Street. But there's not a lot of room right there as it is, and that would require moving the public parking area to the rear of the site, which in turn comes back to that intermixing of public traffic with the DPW traffic. Uh, again, a public safety issue. And another option might be to locate the principal building off of Pine Street. That would, um, require significant filling of wetlands, as well as significant and costly earthwork. Those two, um, activities would be detrimental to the environment, as well as cost prohibitive and a financial burden to taxpayers.
Pine Street.
That was Palm, Palm, right.
I'm sorry, yes. I, um, I, I, earlier in the presentation, I referred to Pond Street when I meant Pine Street. So I guess that's getting back at me. I apologize. Um, i- i- is that clear to everybody? I can go through that again. It's Pond Street.
I got it.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So in summary, granting relief from the accessory structure requirements will not result in a substantial detriment to the public good, and it would constitute a benefit to the town and public good in that it would be safer, it would keep the public traffic and DPW operations separate from one another. It would allow the existing DPW to provide indoor vehicle storage to protect the environment and the town's fleet. It would be, would provide more efficient response times, improving, um, public safety. It provides a safer work environment for the town staff. And the benefits gained from relief of these requirements do not require, I'm sorry, do not conflict with the intent of the Tuxbury bylaws, which are to promote the general welfare of the town and protect health and safety of the town and its inhabitants. That is the end of my presentation. We're happy to take any questions you may have.
Before we changed zoning, we put you on a residential, would you have needed anything?
No.
If this project was already underway?
Correct. The, without getting too far into the details, there were exemptions that covered these issues within the prior zoning bylaws. That's correct.
I'm going to bring this to work tomorrow and show people what they actually have. Nobody believes me. All right, so your eight inches too tall?
Correct.
And then you're in front of your existing, uh, you're in front of your, your new building.
Correct, the front building line of the new building, yes.
Is it the new building meets the setbacks on the front and it pushes the food pantry? Is that what's happening there?
The food pantry is not moving. It's located where it's always been. We don't propose to move it. It's situating the new building, compliant with the town's and zoning bylaw setbacks. But the food pantry, where it's always been, ends up in front of that front building line. Does that make sense?
Yes, yep, yep. That's what's happening there, that when you guys make that front setback, the food pantry is now in compliance with that.
Correct.
Article minus, yep. What happens if the administration portion of that building isn't built? Can we see you again?
We are asking for variance for those two situations that, um, i- if it's not built, then it's actually two accessory structures that fall a little bit, um, in front of the front building line. So if we were to.
Well, if, if I could. My understanding is if the administrative offices aren't moved into the new building, then the existing building is still the primary structure on the site. That, that's what houses our offices.
Hmm, I don't think so, Kevin. We've been, we've been, am I actually contradicting the client, um, here on, on stage? We consider the new principal, the, the new building to be the principal structure because of the, it's the base of the main operation, so.
Yeah, I, I. I, I think that's something we'd have to.
Okay.
To investigate. Um, you know, because our current operations are in that front building. Um, you know, the, the new building will house fleet maintenance, which is ancillary to our operations. Uh, vehicle storage, which is ancillary to our operations, as well as, uh, you know, shops and, uh, you know, locker rooms and things like that. A couple offices for administrative staff, but the main administrative functions of the, the facility will remain in that front building. Uh, you know, but to, to speak to Tony's point is if that, um, administrative offices aren't built, yet that new building is considered the primary building, then we would need the variance to cover both the food pantry and the existing building as accessory structures in front of the primary structure. And right now, you only need the food pantry? Correct.
Well, i- if I could rephrase that, what, what we're asking for, what, what I was intending to ask for was that we get approval from the zoning board of appeals for both buildings with respect to that front building line. That way, if we ended up not going forward with the administrative offices under the bid alternate, we would not need to come back and it would, um, because then the other building, the existing DPW, the front building line comes into effect. So if we got the approval for both of them, it would seem like maybe we don't need to come back to the ZBA. Did I answer your question? Did we answer your question? Okay.
I'm with you. I just don't know if you can. Because what you're asking for basically is if you go this way, you want the variance, and if you go this way, you want the variance. How do we do that when children plans filed up with this board?
It was up here in that presentation, he showed both ways. Whether they have the front structure or not. So it really was by our board. Because if you remember, he outlined.
Oh, I remember.
Okay.
Is it really the building specific? Great.
How's it written?
Nancy?
Yes. It's the three of you guys.
Okay. If you read E3.
Yeah?
It, it's not really building specific. If you read E3. It just says accessory structure.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm located, well, he's got two accessory structures.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we have to come back. Anywhere you go, that building's still going to be 20 foot 8 inches tall, right?
Correct.
I have no questions.
Is there anything else you wanted to add? Being a public hearing, anybody else want to say anything? Uh, please go up to the podium over there and name and address for the board, please.
I'm William Duross. I live at 988 Whipple Road, right across the street. And I was just wondering, what are they going to do with all that stuff that they keep in the back of the building? This looks like this new building is going to be, you know, they keep all the leaves and all that debris in the back of the building. Is that going to move somewhere?
No, there, uh, there is going to be some tree clearing.
We can address the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
Don't care. Uh, so we are going to do some tree clearing on the, the western side. Uh, we've actually been working with the contractor to remove a lot of that material uh, that we're using on other projects throughout town for water line replacement and things like that.
Okay. Okay.
And, uh, this is, this has nothing to do with the, the land that's cleared in the back, right, where they were going to build new houses there on Pond Street?
No.
It's got nothing to do with that land.
Not to my knowledge, correct? No, that's a whole different.
Correct, it does not have anything to do with that parcel.
Yeah, that's, that's a new place they're building for veterans?
No, no, no.
No, no, it's with veterans used, well, I mean, the place used to be, they're going to, supposed to build five new homes there, but it never started.
It used to, that was it, the?
DAV?
Yeah, the DAV used to be there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's not even your property, right?
No.
No, it was.
No, it's nothing to do with them.
And if this gets all approved, when do, when would this start?
My credit is on O'Brien, Carrot Johnson and Bornstein LLC under Mass. Journal of Rights, Chapter 48, Section 8, as a party agreed by a decision made by the Building Inspector and letter dated December 9th, 2020, to construct a 40-by-60 single-family dwelling with a 30-by-60 garage. Site property is located at Foster Lane, assessors map 24, lot 26, Zone Residential. This is continued from last month, 1/26/23. Name and address, please.
My name is Kevin O'Brien. I am the applicant. I'm from 18 Chasm History Handover Mass.
Okay, can you talk about what's going on here, please?
Oh, I am the applicant on this case. We were asked if we would, it has been requested of us that we provide a statement of our position as to the legal right to access the property over Foster Lane. My lawyer is on vacation this week, but last week he actually sent a letter to your department on February 16th, or asking that that letter be sent to your town council for their review.
And it would be the three of us voting, Mike, myself, and Row.
My credit is on O'Brien, Carrot Johnson and Bornstein LLC under Mass. Journal of Rights, Chapter 48, Section 8, as a party agreed by a decision made by the Building Inspector and letter dated December 9th, 2020, to construct a 40-by-60 single-family dwelling with a 30-by-60 garage. Site property is located at Foster Lane, assessors map 24, lot 26, Zone Residential. This is continued from last month, 1/26/23. Name and address, please.
My name is Kevin O'Brien. I am the applicant. I'm from 18 Chasm History Handover Mass.
Okay, can you talk about what's going on here, please?
Oh, I am the applicant on this case. We were asked if we would, it has been requested of us that we provide a statement of our position as to the legal right to access the property over Foster Lane. My lawyer is on vacation this week, but last week he actually sent a letter to your department on February 16th, or asking that that letter be sent to your town council for their review.
And it would be the three of us voting, Mike, myself, and Row.
When was, when did your attorney send this letter?
I believe he sent it either Thursday or Friday of last week.
Okay. So it's not this one dated April 14th of 2022?
No, that was a letter that was sent to the Building Inspector on April, requesting the building government.
So tonight, you're just asking for the letter that your attorney sent on Friday to be forwarded to town council for his review?
That is correct.
I'm sorry?
And we'd like to continue the hearing until the next meeting of course, and Capitol is around, he's a bad chance to communicate.
So we're going to continue this for next month?
But I know you'll have people here, I mean...
Would you, I didn't hear, sir. What'd you just say?
You have people here that probably want to be heard, so I'm not looking to just...
Okay, so you would like, so what do you want us to consider right now? Is this something you want us to push off for another month?
Well, I'm going to ask you to continue it for another month, but if, if there's any input from neighbors or anybody, we'd certainly like to take that.
So I mean...
Maybe have it in the next month.
He's asking to continue, so...
What he's asking for is his attorney sent a letter to...
Right.
...our office.
Right, which...
And he'd like to be continued to have town council have a look at that letter.
Mm-hmm. So we just want to push this out until that's done?
Yep.
What's the initial of that?
I, who's the initial?
Do you want to open that up or pushing it out?
I wouldn't.
No. Okay, that being said, then we'll push this out till next month. Is there, Attorney Plunkett, is there something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, David Plunkett, an officer of 491 Dutton Street, Lowell, presided 257 Fifth Street in Tewksbury here tonight, representing JDB Realty Trust LLC, owner of the property at 173 Dixon Avenue, directly abut in this parcel on the assessors map, it's parcel 2470, 2427, that is owned by my client. Madam Chair, if we could, I'd like to get a copy of that letter, and I would ask for ability to submit to the board tonight a decision of the appellate court of the Carmouth of Massachusetts from 1994, in which the issue relative to the property owned by Mr. O'Brien and the rights to access Foster Lane was the focus point of that litigation, and the appeals court made a determination that they had no right of access over Foster Lane. I'd like to submit to the board to have in the record the decision of the appellate court from 1994, and also make the request that we receive a copy of the letter that was submitted here for the public hearing tonight.
Okay. Do we have to submit that to the...
Thank you.
...downstairs? We'll have to bring it down, probably, and...
Thanks.
Attorney Plunkett, will you be submitting this as well?
Yes.
Thank, thank you. With the town, I just want to make sure that...
And then this is on record in the town. The town clerk's office has a copy of it back in 1994, when the initial decision of the planning board to allow a subdivision of the so-called Twist Lot, the College Lot, was allowed, the appellate court overturned it and said that it was, it was basically reversed, a new judgment to be entered that it nullled the decision, and in the decision, it sets forth the rationale that, in fact, that the defendant makes reference to the conclusion that the defendant had access over, over Foster Lane, says the right of access over Foster Lane is clearly erroneous. It also went into detail relative to the fact that there's no rights of easement, estoppel arguments, or anything else, that the Twist Lot is a stranger to the JW Wilbur parcel that created these lots, and therefore, a stranger to the parcel has no right of access over any way that's shown on it. And again, that was the same party that's before the ZBA here tonight. Mr. O'Brien, at that time, was the direct owner. At this time, its title is held by his wife, and, but same, same issue, same party, conclusion should be the same. We're in agreement with the building inspector that this lot is not a buildable lot, which they're trying to overturn, requesting the ZBA to overturn that decision of the, of the building commissioner, and we say that we support and that the building commissioner is correct, that it is not a buildable lot. The only thing that we would point out, however, in the decision, the building commissioner indicates that it's not a buildable lot because it doesn't have 150 feet frontage and it only shows 120 feet of frontage. But the reality is that frontage that is on the Foster Lane is not accessible because of the fact that it doesn't, he has zero right of access over Foster Lane, and therefore, he has zero frontage for determination of a buildable lot.
I just ask that you please just forward this info to the town?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does somebody, is there anybody else that want to say anything? No? Okay, somebody want to make a motion to push this off till next month?
I'll make a motion that we continue Margaret S. O'Brien, Carrot Johnson and Bornstein LLC to our next meeting, which is March 30th, 2023, at 6:30 PM.
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a month.
See you in a month. Okay, any old business? New business?
Nope.
Okay. Yes, that's right, Dan. Okay, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.